All right, good evening and welcome to the July 28th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall. I'll set aside my usual remarks for the moment and I'll just announce that we will be entering into executive session at 6:30. So first on the agenda, we do have executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a 3, meeting with town council relating to the appeals of application number 61-20, Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot 4 and T Ticket, and also appeal of application number 50-20M Village at Brick Hill LLC, 511 Brick Hill Road in West Falmouth. So as the chairman, I'm making the determination that if the board were to discuss these two matters in a public hearing, it would have a detrimental effect on this board's litigation position regarding both matters. So with that having been said, I will make the motion to enter into executive session for both matters and I'll add to it that the board will enter into executive session and then will vote to return back into public session at the close of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All right, so the motion was made by myself, seconded by James. Roll call, vote as always to go into executive session. Jerry?
Jerry Patanis, aye.
James Morse, aye.
TJ Hury, aye.
Scott Peterson, aye.
Maffey, aye.
Mark Fenneren, aye.
All right, so the board will be entering into executive session. This is a private meeting with the board and town council, so my apologies to everyone. Please ask everyone to leave the room. We'll try to do this as quickly as possible so we can get underway with our public meeting items. Thank you. All right, good evening and to most of you, welcome back again to the July 28th meeting of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals here at Falmouth Town Hall. Calling the meeting to order once again and ask everyone to please silence their cellphones. I'll introduce the board, starting on your far right. My far left is Jerry Patanis, who is an associate member of the board. To his right is James Morse, who is a full voting member. My name is TJ Hury, I'm the chair of the board. To my left is Scott Peterson, who is a full voting member, followed by Suzanne Murphy, who's a full voting member. And newly appointed to the board, I almost said elected, but appointed by the select board on Monday night, is Mark Fenneren, who is our newest full voting member. Also with us is Sinaitis Norrie Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley D'Amillo, who is the recording secretary. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town and the board considers requests for special permits, variances, and appeals as provided in the bylaws, which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant, from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the files, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant and the public will be invited to comment as well. Public comment should only be directed at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor, in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, come to the podium to your left here, and we ask you to please give your name and address along with any question, comment, or concern that you may have. While you're up at the podium, we do ask you to remain behind the podium itself and please speak into the microphone. Microphones at the podium and in front of us here, they are not meant for amplification purposes within the room, they're meant for everyone watching at home on FCTV. The board will then either close or continue the hearing. When the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision, by vote and motion of the board, or I'm sorry, by vote and motion of the board, the hearing will be closed. In the alternative, we may then continue the hearing to a future date in time certain. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decisions, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves and a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special project is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So turning to our agenda for the night, we did have executive session at 6:30. We do have public comment, there are no continuations, and we have five new hearings and a few items on our open meeting agenda. So first up, now that we've already had executive session, is public comment. This public comment period is meant for anything that's not on the agenda, so if you're standing by waiting to provide comment on a project, just please wait for the appropriate evening, point in the evening. So does anyone have anything to say for something that is not on the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, moving right ahead, no continuations under our new hearings, and I'll be appointing James as clerk for the night. We do have application number 46-22, Sprayer, 146 Alcott Road in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise the existing deck and construct in addition to the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling.
So Mr. Chairman, being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals, under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you hereby notify that application number 46-22, Jason M. and Jody M. Sprayer of 7 Doe Brook Circle Bridge, apply to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 240-10.1C 3, formerly 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise the existing deck and construct an addition to the pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on subject property, and it's 146 Alcott Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, being map 40, Section 2A, Parcel 000, Lot 220. In the file, we do have an agent authorization authorizing Attorney Moynihan to represent the applicant. For referrals, we have CONCOM, conservation staff have no comments on the above referenced project, as it appears to be outside of CONCOM jurisdiction. From engineering, application was reviewed for impacts to public right-of-ways and public utilities. Alcott Road is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission for the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights-of-way. And number four, a drywell for the roof is proposed, as we typically recommend. Fire department has no comment, water department has no comment, planning department has no comment, health department has no comment, assessors have no comment. There are three letters, none of which are objections, two from abutters, one from the homeowners association. There is an affidavit in the file from the property owner indicating she's the owner of the property. They've owned the property since June 18th, 2012. There's an exterior deck located on the southwest side of the dwelling that existed at the time that she and her husband purchased the property. The exterior shed with covered deck located in the western portion of the property existed at the time I said husband and I purchased the property. According to the town Falmouth Assessor's records, the dwelling of the property was built around 1980. Given the current condition of the deck attached to the dwelling, the property referenced above it appears to, to the best of my knowledge, to have been constructed in the 1980s. Sworn and notarized. That would it, Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. And for the applicant, Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, a Falmouth attorney representing the applicant. Nicholas Preston is here with me this evening, who is the architect for the project as well. This is a property in Great Harbors at 146 Alcott Road. The location of the property is here, and you can see this property that abuts, it is owned by the association, and they've indicated no objection to the project. And you also have a letter from a property owner across the street, no objections to the project. This is the existing home, as noted, built in the 1980s. It's a fairly modest-sized home. It is obviously a developed neighborhood. The existing lot coverage is conforming, under 20% by structure, under 40% overall. It's a 10,700 square foot lot, Zone Residential B. And the property owner proposes to remove the existing deck that's adjacent to the dwelling, construct a one-story addition at 14.2 feet in height, and add a new deck more to the rear of the property. Lot coverage will remain under 20%, and no increase in the building height, the existing is 22.2 feet. This is the site plan, and you can see the location here on the south side of the property where the one-story addition will go and the new deck. No changes proposed to the shed at the rear of the property there. The house is non-conforming as to this side yard setback, which is right here, 5.5 feet. And again, this is the open space property, so we're not proposing to change that setback, it'll stay at 5.5 feet. These are the floor plans, just showing the existing home as is, and this is the addition area. The family would like to add a family room to the home. There'd be a crawl space underneath and a new deck out back. And this is the elevation, showing the addition here on the left side, one story, relatively modest addition of the family room. And these are the other elevations, which you have in your file, showing the rear and side. The proposed lot coverage would be increased by 321 square feet, but still under 20%. And lot coverage by overall would actually be reduced by .03% from the existing, but still conforming, under 40%. So now I guess we're back to the old sections of the bylaw, but it's a good thing we use both in these. Anyway, under 240-3C, it's a non-conforming structure with the reduced side yard setback. No change proposed to that. As mentioned, it abuts the association open space and the project meets all other setbacks. I would submit it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing. No adverse traffic, no increase in bedrooms, and beneficial impacts to the neighborhood overall generally with any home improvement. So I would submit that the standards of the zoning bylaw have been met. I've cited them there under the recodified bylaw, or formerly 240-216. And that is the presentation. If you have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. Turn over to board questions. Jerry, anything?
No questions at this time.
James?
No questions, thank you.
Scott?
No, I think it's a good site. I don't think there's any detrimental change to the abutters or anything, so I think it's a good opportunity.
Suzanne?
We have correspondence from the HOA.
Yes, there's a letter in the file indicating no objection from the Great Harbors Residents' Association.
All right, Mark?
I don't see how anybody could object. Definitely an improvement to the neighborhood, the property, doesn't go any further than it did before. Actually, it's less covered, right? So I have no problems.
All right, no questions for me, so we'll turn it over to public comment. Anyone else there with any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project tonight? Not seeing anyone, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Okay, motion to close made by James. Second. Second by Scott, thank you Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for the board's decision?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Scott. Findings?
So 240, 10.1C 3 or 240-3C, depending which one we're using. Project is to raise an existing deck, add an addition. Project is on an RB zoning district sitting on a lot of approximately 10,700 square feet. Existing structure is 1,626 square feet, going to 1,947, addition of 321 square feet. Project will add usefulness to the family. Applicant location is in the Green Pond Coastal Overlay District. Project is non-conforming as to side yard setbacks at 5.5 feet, where 10 is required. Not in a FEMA flood zone, no new non-conformities created. Two letters of support from abutters and a letter from the homeowners association, the Great Harbors Resident Association, in support of the project, no opposition at the hearing.
I think it's also worth noting that non-conformity, that 5.5, that abuts open land, it's not like there's a new room.
As you mentioned, lot coverage 15.2, going up to 18.2%. The septic's 1,000 gallons, it's not for a bedroom, so it's just for a family room.
Not more detrimental.
Not more detrimental.
Magic words.
Yep.
The old 240, 216, and what's the...
Drywell is proposed, will be added.
All right, if that does it for findings, how about conditions?
For plans, standard hours of work, materials and vehicles to remain off roadways, drywall will be added.
Keep the construction vehicles on the premises.
Standard engineering comments, just to be incorporated to the conditions.
All right, anything else?
Do you want to note that there will be no additional bedrooms absent further report of help approved?
Sure, yeah, that's fair.
All righty, anything else either for findings or conditions? All right, so that was a motion to approve with conditions made by James and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next we have application 47-22, Verum Trustee, Nine Fells Road in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a third garage bay.
Being all persons deemed affected by the board of appeals, under Section 11 of Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that application number 47-22, Barnham Trustee, 7 Nantucket Road, Wellesley, Mass. is applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Sections 246.6B, formerly 240-23G1 of the Code of Falmouth to allow a third garage bay. Subject property is Nine Fells Road, Falmouth, Mass., being map 50, Section 6, Parcel 18, Lot 70. For referrals, CONCOM, the Conservation Commission held a hearing under the notice of intent, which was closed on January 12th, 2022. The project was approved and an order of conditions was issued on February 28th, 2022. Correspondence and findings are in the file. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts as to public right-of-ways and public utilities. Fells Road is a public right-of-way in this area. The proposed driveway and abandonment of the existing driveway are covered by the approved driveway permit 2022-003, and the bond was submitted. We will inspect and monitor the erosion controls required by the driveway permit. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights-of-ways. Four, drywells are proposed for the roof, as we typically recommend. Number five, we recommend the following condition be included in any proposal. On completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per 99, Section 1. A fixing of legible numbers required time limit for compliance. Fire department has no comment, assessors have no comment, planning, no comment. As for referrals, Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. All right, and for the applicant?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Morrison. I'm the architect for the project at Nine Fells Road, and I'm representing local studio. And as was mentioned, we're here tonight to request a third garage bay for the project. The project is presently under construction. It was issued a building permit for that construction, which demonstrates full compliance with zoning when it was submitted. And the request for the garage has no impact to the footprint, and like the previous applicant, there are no additional bedrooms that are being added, so there's no also impact to the septic system. And there's no change to the roof form. We are just simply adding, asking permission to add the third garage bay.
Anything else, or would you like to turn it over to board questions?
And that is it. Thank you.
Sounds good, you're welcome. Mark, any questions?
Not at the moment.
Suzanne? You're not right yet. Scott?
I have nothing.
James?
Can I just ask why this wasn't just originally designed with a third garage bay and why instead you're coming back now asking for a change?
Yes, that's a fair question. We designed the house so as to one day come back and make this request, and just given the economic climate of the past year, the clients have decided to revisit this sooner rather than later, and they want to add a charging station for a third garage bay. So...
Thank you for mentioning that.
Jerry, anything?
No questions.
All right. I usually ask what's the third bay for, but that was already addressed.
Yeah.
All right, so if that does it for board questions, public comment. Anyone out there with any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this project? Seeing none, back to the board.
Motion to close.
Motion to close made by James, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, thank you Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And would the board like to proceed?
Motion approved with conditions.
Second.
All right, thank you, James, thank you, Scott. Findings?
240-23G1 or 240-6.6B, it's a request for a third garage bay at the locus, currently dwelling is 3,343 square feet. It's conversion of an existing shop space into a third garage bay. Property's in an RB zoning district in the Oyster Pond Coastal Overlay District. It isn't a flood zone, acts in a VE zone.
I thought it was over here when I drove up.
No, there'll be no increase in bedroom count.
Nope.
Testimony is that it's for a charging station for an electric vehicle.
A driveway? That's a new one.
They conform to all setbacks and lot coverage requirements currently.
And they've already obtained a building permit, so...
Yes.
Already shown compliance with zoning other than the third garage bay. Okay, anything else for findings? Conditions?
For plans, for CONCOM's order of conditions, drywells will be added for plans, standard engineering comments, writing a fixture of numbers.
Do we mention CONCOM in the findings?
Yes.
All right, anything else for conditions?
Standard hours of work and keeping materials out of the roadway.
Didn't engineering have something with the driving permit?
They did.
Yeah, driveway permit?
Yeah, my motion was just to include all the engineering comments into the decision.
All right, anything else for either findings or conditions?
They had the one-inch water main, but I'm not sure if that was taken care of in the building permit or not. Servants may have to be upgraded to one inch if not already one inch.
I think that's a different... I think that's a different property, because this is.
I didn't see a water comment.
This is a.
New construction.
Pretty new house.
No, I know.
And I think we had maybe for Presley.
Nope. Okay. Nine Fells Road.
Because they have a brand-new water line there, so.
Right, okay. Was in here in the water comments.
All right.
All set.
All right, so for all stuff, that was a motion approved with conditions made by James and second by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you, thanks.
Good luck. All right, up next we have application 48-22, Andrews trustees, 212 Edgewater Drive East in East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming dwelling.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that application number 48-22, George and Laurie B. Andrews trustees, 10 Columbia Avenue, Natick, Massachusetts, have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 240-10.1C3, formerly 240-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and reconstruct the existing non-conforming dwelling on subject property known as 212 Edgewater Drive East, Falmouth, Massachusetts, being map 32, section 17, parcel 000H, lot 8. We have an agent authorization for attorney Moynihan in the file. There's a copy of the deed, map location for referrals. Correspondence from the health department. First floor plan shows two distinct bedrooms and the septic is suitable for two bedrooms. All other spaces cannot be used as bedrooms as there is a Board of Health variance on the septic system, limiting the dwelling to two bedrooms. Other rooms show openings, cased openings that negate privacy and therefore are not considered bedrooms. Rooms such as his hers, offices, craft areas, et cetera, must be maintained as drawn without privacy. Concom, Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions for the above referenced project dated 6/29/2022. The OCC is attached to the file through the here. From engineering, this application was reviewed for impacts to the public right of ways and public utilities. Edgewater Drive East is a public right of way in this area. Proposed alterations would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, we request the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. Quote, "The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit." Three, the limit of work is shown on the plans as we typically recommend. Four, while this project falls in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, we defer to the commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Five, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Six, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of Butters or public rights of way. Seven, dry wells are proposed for the roof runoff as we typically recommend. Eight, we recommend the following condition be included in any such approval, section 99, 1. Completion of conclusion, the applicant shall post the address for this residence, fixing legible numbers required. From water department, existing home has town water from a three-quarter inch service line with a meter pit. The rebuilt home will require a one-inch service and the meter pit must be inside the home. The existing service must be cut capped and the meter removed prior to demolition. Assessor says no comments. Planning has no comments. Fire has no issue with the project as drawn. There are nine letters in support in the file, two letters of no objection.
Thank you, James. And attorney Moynihan again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, a Falmouth attorney, and I represent Mr. and Mrs. Andrews, who are here tonight with Denise Benoli, who's the project architect. And this property is at 212 Edgewater Drive East. The GIS map shows the property, and I just want to take a second because the letters that are in the file, Mr. and Mrs. Andrews, I think did a remarkable job canvassing their neighbors and showing them the plan. So you have letters from Butters on both sides, you have letters from across the street, and generally in the vicinity of this immediate area of the home. So I thought that was just important to point out that the people in that immediate vicinity have, most of them have said they support it and that it would be an improvement to the neighborhood, and a couple of no objection letters. This is the existing home, so a very small home. And here's the rear elevation that has a decline down to the water and side elevations as well. The lot coverage right now is 16.4%. Lot size is about 7,500 square feet. The existing coverage overall is well under the 40% allowed under the bylaw. It is in a flood zone, AE hazard zone. And we have a non-conforming front yard setback of 18.1 and a non-conforming setback to the contour to Eel Pond, the rear of the property. The bylaw requires 50 feet, so there's an existing 34-foot setback there. The proposal is to raise and reconstruct the existing dwelling, relocate the septic tank, reconfigure the existing driveway, add some crushstone. And the Conservation Commission has approved the project under an order of conditions which you have in your file. This is the existing conditions plan. You can see here the front yard setback to the street. And then you have the setback here in the back to Eel Pond. You have this decline here off the coastal bank. And this is the proposed footprint. The front yard setback will increase slightly to about 23, 23.1 feet, I believe, to the steps. The rear setback to Eel Pond will stay the same at 34 feet. Side yard setbacks will conform to the bylaw. And then we have some existing floor plans. These are all in your file, just showing the basement crawl space, the existing home. It's a two-bedroom home, relatively small in size. And the proposed floor plan is obviously to expand the living space to make it more usable. The number of bedrooms will stay the same. This is the second floor plan with the second bedroom up here. And then we have some office space and a family area which do not, which are not bedrooms because of the lack of privacy. Then we have a lower level plan, will be some renovation there, again, with an exercise area and crawl space. This is the front elevation. The building will go up higher at about 32 feet, which complies with the bylaw. The proposed lot coverage will be under the 20% allowed by right at 19.9%. It's an increase of 268 square feet. The proposed lot coverage overall will be 22.2%, so only a slight increase of 84 square feet. So overall, well under the 40% allowed by right. The front yard setback, as I said, will increase. No change to the Eel Pond contour setback. Proposed building height complies with the zoning and the side yard setbacks comply with zoning. I would submit that the project is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming setback. We actually have a better setback in the front. No increase in bedrooms, and the lot coverage of the bylaw has been met. Beneficial impacts to the site and the neighborhood with the home reconstruction are, I think, obvious when you have new construction going in to a neighborhood. The flood and erosion controls that have been added to the plans in a flood zone, stormwater management, the dry wells and the roof gutters. And all of this culminates in what I would submit that the standards of 240, 216 have been met for approval of the requested special permit. And that is the presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions. If you may help.
There you go, attorney Moynihan. Mark, any questions?
No.
Suzanne?
The height is going to be 32.6?
Yes.
What's the height now?
Let me see. I think we measured that on the, it's on the existing condition plan. 18 feet 6 inches. The height's measured from the street level grade.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, Scott, any questions?
Would the ridge height change, attorney Moynihan? No risk of shadowing where lots are fairly small and the Butters are fairly close, from your perspective?
With the ridge height?
Increase, obviously.
Ridge height increase.
Yeah.
Did Mr. want to comment on that? Shadowing or? Yeah, I mean, I think that there will be an increased height, obviously. Go back to the plan. Here you have the new building height from the front. You've got a fairly narrow roof line in the front. And just go back to the site plan. So you have your setbacks on either side of the property. Both neighbors on both sides haven't had any issues with the project. So I think it's, it meets the code for setback requirement regardless.
Thank you.
James, anything?
No questions, just a general comment to both counsel and the applicant. I just, would we have a discretionary decision to be made like this? It's very helpful. So thank you for getting the number of letters, it makes a decision much easier. The neighborhood is behind us.
Jerry, anything?
No comment, good project.
Attorney Moynihan, reviewing the his and her offices and the space there, I didn't quite catch the comments. Is that a cased opening or?
Those are.
I thought they weren't supposed to have closets.
On the top floor?
You're right.
So you've got his office, family room, and her office. Those are doorways that are in excess of four feet, so they don't qualify as bedrooms.
In excess of four feet, you say? Okay.
Correct, yep. And the health agent has confirmed that as well in his referral.
Thank you. My concern was the closet space, it was lending itself to be, you know, smaller rooms if you were able to put doors there. But I think I'm satisfied with the four.
Okay, yeah, I don't think that closets would qualify as a bedroom. But it was designed with the openings to not have the privacy required to classify them as bedrooms.
Understood, thank you for clarifying.
Those have no doors?
No doors, case, four-foot cased opening.
Four-foot cased opening.
All right, if that does it for the board for now, we can turn it over to public comment. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns from members of the public? Not seeing any, back to the board.
Motion to close.
All right, motion to close made by James, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And how would the board like to go forward?
Motion to approve with conditions.
All right, thank you, James, is there a second?
I will second.
Scott, thank you, Scott. Findings?
Property locations, 212 Edgewater Drive, 240-3C, 240-10.1C3, not more detrimental. Project seeks to raise and reconstruct an existing non-conforming dwelling. Location's in an AE13 zone, RC zoning district on a lot of approximately 7,530 feet. Existing dwelling is 1,233, proposed is 1,501 square feet. It's in the Waukegan Bay Coastal Pond Overlay District. Project will bring the property into FEMA compliance. Property's non-conforming as to front yard setbacks currently at 18.1 feet, as well as the contour of Eel Pond currently at 35 feet. No new non-conformities, addition is modest, approximately 84 square feet. We've had referrals from health department and Concom, which will be incorporated into the decision. Health department, a testimony of the applicant is that this is a two-bedroom house and will remain at two bedrooms. There are several other spaces identified, but the Board of Health is satisfied as they are four-foot cased openings. They are not bedrooms. Nine letters of support from the neighbors, two letters of no, no opposition or objection. No opposition at the hearing. What else am I missing?
You did say Concom.
Concom order, yes. Concom has issued order of conditions.
Did you get the height? Proposed height, 32.
Proposed height.
32.6?
Yep.
Other than that, I think we're good. Conditions?
Per plans, per Concom's order of conditions. Water department, meter pit to be removed, service to be upgraded to a one-inch service capped. Previous study construction. All the engineering comments.
Remain at two beds?
Remaining at two bedrooms.
Right. To demolition, I think it was.
The offices will be encased, the openings. It's per plan anyways.
Yeah.
On the plans we have.
Remain at two beds.
Engineering, approve the driveway permit with a bond?
Yep, part of the engineering comments, but yep.
Dry wells. Post the house. Post house number.
Usual hours for construction.
Vehicles and materials to not be on the roadway.
Looks a little tight, maybe keep it off the road the best you can and work with Falmouth PDs.
We'll work with PD if there's, yeah.
If they have to.
Yep.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing none, that was a motion to approve by James and seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Exactly, nice job.
It's nice when the plans are good, you know?
Yeah.
She's up for the AC.
I thought it was just me, because I'm not casually drunk. All right, so up next we have application number 49-22, Carbanda in Fort, or Forte? 52 Crescent Ave in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures.
So being all persons deemed affected by the Board of Appeals under section 11 of chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that application number 49-22, Kenneth S. Carbanda and Laura J. Fort, 196 East 75th Street, apartment 23, 20C, New York, New York, have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-10.2A and 240-11.3A4, formerly 240-3C and 240-69E. The Code of Falmouth to raise and rebuild the non-conforming single-family dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 52 Crescent Avenue, Falmouth, Massachusetts, being map 46B, section 12, parcel 8, lots 1. We have authorization for attorney Clower to represent the applicant. We have correspondence from the Falmouth Historical Commission. Waiver of delay for 52 Crescent, 52 Crescent Avenue. We have correspondence from Scott McGann from the health department emailing. The referral was due on 7/12. Health has no issues with the proposed project. The home is not increasing bedroom count, and the new septic design appears suitable for the five existing bedrooms. A full review of the septic plan will be done once a septic system installation permit is submitted to health. Correspondence from Lush Bergeron. Since this property is located in AE flood zone, the applicant will need to file an RDA with our department. If you could forward them the following information attached to application, I'd appreciate it. It's from Conservation. From engineering, the application was reviewed for impacts to public right of ways and public utilities. Crescent Avenue, Central Park Avenue, and Grand Avenue are public rights of way in the area. The proposed alterations would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, we request the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition. If the special permit is approved, the applicant shall obtain, excuse me, an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Three, any connections or alterations to public utilities require permission from the appropriate town department. Four, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public rights-of-way. Five, drywells are proposed for the roof, as we typically recommend. Six, we recommend the following condition be included or similar in any approval. On completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per section ninety-nine one. A fixing of legible numbers required. Number seven, uh, where this is small s, site with public right-of-ways on three sides, we will require that erosion and sediment controls are included in the driveway permit for this project to protect the town's downstream stormwater system. We recommend the following condition be included in an approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document which can be found on the engineering division's page, the town's webpage. Engineering division will oversee the erosion controls as part of the driveway permit. Number eight, it appears that a portion of a post-in-rail fence is located within the Grand Avenue public right-of-way. Permanent installation of objects not owned by the town located within municipal rights-of-way typically require a license from the select board. We defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals if this matter should be addressed prior to any approval or is a condition in any approval. Fire department has no comment. Water department, the existing home has town water, size not noted in the records. The existing service must be cut, capped prior to demolition. Uh, if it is determined during the cut, cap, that the existing service is three-quarter inch, it will have to be upgraded to one inch prior to the service being connected to the rebuilt home. Assessing includes lots one, four, part of fourteen and ten. Plans appear to show home facing Grand Ave. If so, engineering needs to assign a new number for the address. Historical, demolition delay waiver application has been filed with Historical Com, uh, Commission and is scheduled for July thirteenth. That was also written. Uh, July twenty-fifth is the letter authorizing the waiver without delay. There is a lot comparison worksheet that was submitted.
All right. And for the applicant, Attorney Clower?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, and I am representing, uh, Kenneth Carbanda and Laura Forte, the owners of fifty-two Crescent Avenue. Uh, the applicants are here this evening, and I'm also joined by Greg Serunian of ResCom Engineering. We're here tonight seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling at this site. Fifty-two Crescent Avenue is located really in, in the heart of Falmouth Heights, just across from the field, um, at the intersections of Crescent Ave, Grand Ave, and Central Park Avenue. As you know, it is a very dense, largely seasonal neighborhood. This lot, particular lot's eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-two square feet. It is located in the residential C zoning district, and it is in an AE thirteen flood zone. Presently, there's a five-bedroom, single-family dwelling and shed with a total footprint of about eighteen hundred square feet. The existing dwelling is non-conforming to front yard setback at ten point two feet, where twenty-five is required, as well as lot coverage by structure being twenty point one, where twenty percent allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. The applicants have owned this property since two thousand and five, however, they are now in the process of making this their primary residence. The existing dwelling needs significant repairs, both cosmetically and structurally. Uh, given its location in the flood zone, the AE thirteen, the scope of repairs that are, uh, that are required necessitate compliance with the flood zone standards. In order to meet these requirements, they have to, uh, raise the elevation of the structure. So they're proposing to raise the existing and rebuild a new, which would be in compliance, a new structure which would be in compliance with those standards. Pursuant to the Building Code and FEMA guidelines, the structure has to be raised so that all habitable space and mechanicals are at least one foot above the flood zone elevation. That flood zone elevation's thirteen, ground elevation's, uh, just about ten throughout the entire site. So the applicant's going to have to raise the first floor habitable space to at least four feet above the existing grade. The proposed dwelling, uh, reduces the clutter on the lot substantially. It eliminates the existing shed and includes a garage, which the hu, house doesn't currently have, which will reduce the need for outdoor parking. It maintains the same number of bedrooms, uh, in addition has a new Title V system. The non-conforming front yard setback is improved slightly, ten point two to eleven. Uh, and lot coverage by structure, though increasing, uh, is eliminated as a non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit, which doesn't currently exist. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, uh, it will comply with the FEMA requirements. Due to the existing non-conformities, this does require a special permit under two forty-three C and two forty sixty-nine E. I'm going to just use those numbers for the time being because I know those ones. Two, under two forty-three C, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that the board finds that the proposal's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of two forty, two sixteen, and whether or not the alterations create any new dimensional non-conformities, impair views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conformities are either improved or eliminated. Proposal does not impair views and vistas from the public way, and it does fit with the neighborhood. Which brings us to two forty sixty-nine E. In the residential C zoning district, lot coverage by structure over twenty percent requires a special permit. And in considering that, the board is asked to look at the size and height of the structure relative to the size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyments. Here we have no impacted views and vistas from public ways. The dwelling, while larger than present, um, is located in, what I, as we mentioned, a very dense clustered neighborhood, and there's many homes of similar scope and desi, uh, design. We did submit a lot comparison worksheet showing that the proposed dwelling is by no means an outlier within the area, especially in the context of the immediate neighbors, which includes a recent permit issued for the raisin rebuild of forty-four Grand Avenue directly across the street. There's no effective nitrogen on coastal abeyments, has the same number of bedrooms, and we actually have an upgraded septic system in this case. Uh, we are aware of the engineering referral, uh, regarding the fence. Uh, the applicants have no intent to keep that fence so that, that post-in-rail fence would be removed as part of the reconstruction of this. This project, as proposed, is a significant improvement over the existing conditions for the applicants. The existing non-conformities are either improved or eliminated. There's no new dimensional non-conformity, and there's no new, uh, there's no adverse effects that's overbalanced the benefits of outlined. In short, there's nothing about this proposal that's substantially more detrimental than what currently exists. I believe that this meets all the standards of two forty-three C, two forty sixty-nine E, and two forty two sixteen. And for these reasons, I would ask that this board grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
All right, thank you, Attorney Clower. The board questions. Jerry, anything?
Two things, I think it's architecturally pleasing. And I, if, I've never noticed this before, but that notice says we're not supposed to rely on that plan. If you read the red notice.
It says if it's not stamped.
Okay, correct, I misread it.
Anything else, Jerry?
Nope.
All right, James?
You're keeping the shed, correct?
No, shed's being removed.
Okay, but you're still going to twenty-five percent?
We are.
Lot coverage.
Mm-hmm.
You understand, no decks, nothing in the future?
Nope.
You're tapped out?
Yep. But they are adding the garage, which is really what's, uh, constitutes the increase, and that's going to, I think, improve the site overall.
Don't think of anything else, thank you.
All right. Thanks, James. Scott?
Yeah, I guess we're maxed out pretty much everywhere, right? Uh, so we're going to raise the house four feet? Is, is that what you mentioned?
Yep.
Attorney Clower, okay. And ridge height is bumping right up against the maximum.
Thirty-four feet, six inches. Existing ridge height is about twenty-seven, so it's an increase of about seven feet.
Okay. Nothing further?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Suzanne?
I'm unfamiliar with dumb waiters. Do they need inspection services yearly?
I'm sorry, what was the question, ma'am?
The dumb waiters? I don't know, do those?
I'm going to defer, I'm going to defer to Mr. Serunian on this one, because that's above my pay grade.
Well, I don't know if it's like a thing that needs to be inspected every year or how that works.
Again, uh, Greg Serunian, ResCom Architectural. So the state has regulations on those. I don't believe dumb waiters come with an inspection yearly, but I think they have to have a maintenance, uh, program where the company that services them has to do something to comply with the state regulations. I don't know what that frequency is. But elevators are yearly, but dumb waiters are not.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
First, I'd like to state that, um, I own and live on Grand Ave, slightly up the street, but I, it's not going to affect my, uh, ability to decide it. I'm certainly not in a butter.
Okay, so you, you didn't receive an abutters notice, so you're?
No, no, so I'm, I'm, I'm on the other side of Worcester Court. But, um, I do have one question. Um, there's a relatively new house just occupied in the last two or three weeks across the street, the White House, I believe it's number forty-four.
Forty-four Grand Ave, yeah.
And they have a second floor deck, which I'm assuming now looks out over the park and over the ocean.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is this extra seven feet in height? Is that going to, uh, affect there?
It, it very well could. Um, I don't know the exact, I, I actually did the permitting for Ms. Carl when, uh, when she went for, before this board. Uh, I don't know the exact view area that she has over this lot, but she does, there's no view easement, and she has reviewed these plans. Uh, nothing was submitted either for or against, but I actually did provide her with a copy of these plans, uh, as a courtesy, as well as the other neighbors, uh, directly to the west. So there's been no correspondence, and there's no view easement, so there's nothing preventing them from going up. If, I hope that answers your question.
Fine.
Uh, Attorney Clower, would you be amenable to, um, conditions concerning, uh, I'll just use the same, the phrase being ta, tapped out now? Regar, regarding the height, maybe, uh, surate framing?
Sure, I, I, I fully expected that would be a condition.
And as far as the lot coverage, you're going to twenty-five percent on the dot?
Uh, twenty-five percent by structure, so that still leaves room for patios if need be.
Right, okay. All right, that does it for me. Any questions, comments, concerns of members of the public? Not seeing any, back to the board. Anyone have any other follow-up questions?
Motion to close.
All right, motion closed, keeping James.
Took him to Gaston, I guess.
Is there a second? Second by Scott, that's a surprise, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, passes unanimously, hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. How would we like to proceed?
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
All right, thank you, James, thank you, Scott. Moving on to findings?
Two forty dash three C, two forty dash sixty-nine E, or two forty dash ten point two A, two forty dash eleven point three A four. Applicant seeks to raise and reconstruct fifty-two Crescent Avenue, Falmouth. Locus is in an RC zoning district, AE thirteen flood zone. Uh, there's an existing five-bedroom, one point five bath, house and shed at seven hundred and fifty-six square feet. It's proposed, five-bedroom, two-and-a-half-story, uh, structure at two thousand one hundred ninety-three feet, or twenty-five percent lot coverage. It's currently non-conforming at ten point two feet. Last front yard setback, it's going to eleven feet. Project will bring the residence into FEMA flood zone compliance, uh, going up approximately three to four feet above current grade. Bedroom count is remaining at five bedrooms. Uh, applicant is proposing installing a new Title V septic system. Uh, there's an existing fence that is currently encroaching on a public right-of-way. Testimony is it will be removed. Lot comparison worksheet is in the file. Anything else?
Obtained the?
Oh.
The motion waiver from Historical?
Correct. Uh, ridge height will be thirty-four feet, six inches.
Certification.
Amenable to assertive framing?
You also have a request from the assessors for, uh, consideration for a change in address with the front of the house facing on Grand Ave?
Uh, I would, uh, certainly defer to the engineering and assessors department, um, when they, I, I suspect that would come up when they go to get their building permit. Um, and if at that time they're, they request that, of course, the applicants would have no choice but to cooperate.
Do they have a choice in this matter? I forget what the, if it said the front door was facing the street, therefore it had to be.
Do you think they generally have a preference?
A preference, okay.
I guess where you face on three streets here?
Yeah. I mean, I, I think, I think that would probably come up during the building permit application process, because they have to rec, uh, receive sign-off from assessors and engineering. And if at that point they, uh, requested a, an address change, I mean.
So the comment from assessors is plans appear to show home facing Grand Ave. If so, engineering needs to assign a new number for the address.
Forty-three Grand Ave.
You don't want to come back here for?
I don't, I don't think that would require a?
No, you're probably right, you're right.
Affirmation.
All right. Anything else for findings? Just about does it? Conditions?
Per plans. Applicant to obtain a driveway permit. Just incorporate all the engineering comments into the decision, please. Uh, inclusive of erosion and sediment controls, those are going to be handled, uh, by engineering. Uh, applicant will remove fence or obtain, uh, license from the town. Water service must be cut and capped before demolition, has to be upgraded to one inch if it's found to be less than that. Good comment. Press the numbering. Standard hours of work. Vehicles and construction materials to either be on, on location or work with the police department. Restricted neighborhood. You wanted a framing cert?
Yeah, certificate of framing.
Cert. Forgetting anything?
Uh, do you want anything about the lot coverage? Do you want a certification? Do you want specification about no further?
I think that's fair, given that it's going to the max.
Uh, foundation and final?
Yep, if that's reasonable.
So that's sort of, uh, that's assertive, uh, lock of what you said at foundation and final, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Uh, no future sheds?
Yeah.
Obviously, they'll need to post the address that is determined with engineering?
Whatever that address might be.
All right, last call, anything else? All right, so that was a motion approved with conditions made by James, seconded by Scott. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Houses unanimously.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time this evening.
Nice improvements going on around.
We'll take a five-minute break. Later, because it's getting so noisy.
Decision of the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals, appeal 22-94 in the file. And decision case number 35-19 in the file, which is currently the subject of litigation. We have one email concerning comments. Good morning. We are contacting you regarding the house built in violation on 33 Pheasant Lane. We respectfully request you deny application 5422 Falmouth Housing Trust and support ZBA case 35-19, which enforces the current Falmouth bylaws and building code. This case sets precedent for other unbuildable lots located in Falmouth. Thank you for your consideration of this extremely important matter submitted by Bob and Lois Hewitt, 30 Pheasant Lane. We have email from Roberta Lacudara from 107 Pheasant Lane directed to Nancy Taylor, writing to ask the Select Board to be fully transparent with the homeowners on Pheasant Lane about how we got to the point where a house was permitted to be built on an 11,540 square foot lot. The town zoning regulations require 40,000 square feet. The lot does not meet zoning requirements of the minimum 100-foot average width. Building permit application was also found by the ZBA to gain incorrect and incomplete information that misrepresented the buildability of the project. It goes on in opposition. That's it for the moment.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mark.
This issue came up in April at a Board of Selectmen's meeting. It was mid-April, I'm guessing maybe the 11th, and I made comments on it. And I'm not sure, but I think in the interest of prudence, I should recuse myself from this issue.
Well, I appreciate the disclosure, and I appreciate you recusing yourself if you feel that should happen.
I'm not familiar enough with it, or I think just in the interest of caution, I would be best to do so.
Much appreciated, Mark. So since you're new to the board, if you are recusing yourself, unfortunately, we have to ask you to leave the room.
Get out. Go next door and watch it on TV.
Thank you, Mark. And prior to getting underway with the application, I do have a prepared comment to make. The ZBA has issued several previous decisions regarding the subject property, and there's been a lot of recent discussion about 33 Pheasant Lane, the subject property of this hearing, the 40B tonight. Recently, it was suggested during a Select Board meeting that this board, the ZBA, whether explicitly or implicitly approved a purchase and sale agreement between the Falmouth Housing Trust and the property owner, and that as a result, the board may have preemptively approved the trust's efforts to obtain a comprehensive permit under 40B. That is simply not true. As this board has stated before, the ZBA has not been involved directly or through counsel in the negotiations regarding the sale of the property or the purchase and sale agreement between the Falmouth Housing Trust and the property owner, and the ZBA has not engaged in any discussion at all with the Falmouth Housing Trust or any other parties regarding this matter. Tonight, the ZBA shall review the trust's application as it would any other application, and the ZBA has not made any decision regarding the relief sought in advance of tonight's hearing. As this involves both a matter pending in litigation and a current application, being the 40B application before the board tonight, we are not going to take any questions relating to the litigation or make any other further statements regarding litigation. So with that having been said, Attorney Moynihan?
Chairman, am I voting on this? I think I am.
You would be.
Yeah.
Getting used to the amount of people on the board.
Yeah, I know you're looking around. You didn't count.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I am Laura Moynihan, Falmouth attorney, and I represent the Falmouth Housing Trust. And the trust's board members, some of them are here this evening, as well as Addie Droulat, the president, and Karen Bissonette, the executive director. So I will make a presentation on the comprehensive permit application, just for the record. And so if there are members of the public who are wondering, there has been a stay in the litigation to permit this application to go forward, and it is, I would say, well-settled law in Massachusetts that permit applications can proceed during the pendency of court matters. And this board itself has, in fact, handled matters while litigation was pending, most recently, the Woods Hole Partners. So if anybody is wondering how we got here, that's how we got here. So I will start the presentation. So we are seeking approval for one dwelling unit. The construction is complete, as you know. It would be restricted for sale to a household that would be earning income at or below 80% of the annual median income for Barnesville County, and it's in the existing developed neighborhood of Pheasant Lane. This is the neighborhood map here, and in the relatively center of the GIS map is number 33. You can see from the neighborhood that the size of the lot is relatively comparable to many of the lots on Pheasant Lane. And we have 35 existing houses on Pheasant Lane that I have counted. The site is within walking distance of employment, recreation, schools, and services. It is 10,000 square feet of land area. It's relatively flat topography. There is existing landscape and driveway areas, existing utilities, gas, water, electric, private septic. Pheasant Lane is an improved roadway outside of the Water Resource Protection District, not in a flood hazard zone, and no wetland resource areas or buffers. And I give you all this information because it goes to the comprehensive permit and the standards that are typically applied for an approval under 40B. It is a three-bedroom home of two stories. It was built in 2019. Two bathrooms, one and a half bath, a garage, 1,964 square feet of gross floor area, and it has an exterior deck and yard areas. The lot coverage by structures is under the 20% maximum allowed by zoning and well under the 40% maximum overall. There has been energy-efficient construction and water conservation measures employed, with appliances, the furnace, stretch coat insulation, low flush toilets, and low-volume Access and traffic conditions, one single-family dwelling adds minimal traffic to the roadways. Trip generation is very low, 2.97 per day, .99 in the peak hour, and less than local and regional standards of 25 peak hour trips for traffic impacts which are considered to be of significance. And as I mentioned, the roadways are approved. And this is a photograph of the front of the dwelling and the rear of the dwelling, and the side elevation, and the other side elevation. And here is the existing driveway going into the garage entrance, and you can see the proximity of the home to the other homes on Pheasant Lane. And again, another neighborhood view. So certainly, I would submit the home is very compatible with others in the neighborhood, well-distanced and sighted on the lot from the other homes. This is the plan, the foundation plan, showing the front yard setback that is in excess of the 25 feet required, and the rear and side yard setbacks in excess of 10 feet required under the zoning bylaw. And this is the septic system plan, showing the septic system on the top right of the plan and the deck at the rear of the property. And these are the elevation plans from 2018, showing the front and rear, and floor plans showing the first floor with the living room, master bedroom, dining room, kitchen area, and the rear deck, and the garage, and then the upper floor showing the bedroom number three, and the office and bedroom number two over the garage. So one of the requirements for a comprehensive permit is that the developer have standing under the regulations. So here we have a nonprofit housing developer. We have site control under a purchase and sale agreement, and we have a project eligibility letter that's been approved and received from the Department of Housing and Community Development. So those are the three elements to standing under the regulations. The LIP application was approved by the Falmouth Select Board as well. As far as the project cost of sale price, the acquisition is $400,000. Soft costs are shown. Sale price would be $265,000, and the housing trust has indicated the appraised value as a marker rate home is $900,000. So here we have the Barnesville County median income home price from 2021, April 2021, at about $653,000. And here we have the Falmouth median price in June of 2022 that's gone up to $769,000. And this shows the critical need that we have in the community for affordable housing for families that's restricted and would be sold here for $265,000. This is just a graph showing the rising construction costs from January of 2017 to 2021. I think it's fairly well-known in the community that things are a lot more expensive. In this particular case, it would cost $400,000 or more than $400,000 now to build this home. So the housing trust is paying the $400,000 for it to add another house to the subsidized housing inventory. Right now, the town is at 7.2%, and as you know, the statutory mandated statutory minimum is 10% of the housing inventory. So we are now 417 units short of the 10% minimum. And we have more affordable housing data. The Affordable Housing Plan from 2019 called for 370 units to be constructed in five years, 56 ownership units. 28 of those 56 were recommended as three or more bedroom units as sales. And we have here, again, what has been built and occupied since 2019 under the Housing Production Plan, six units. So we have a long way to go in terms of meeting that 56 units in a couple of years. The waivers that have been requested under 40B for the project, 100-foot minimum average width required, this property has about 82 feet, 40,000-square-foot lot area is now required under the bylaw, 10,000 square feet of land area is provided, plus there's a small strip of land that's also included at the back of the lot that adds some to that as well, but for the most part, it's a 10,000-square-foot lot. So we went through Pheasant Lane to show out of 35 lots from the assessor's records, showing 17 in the 10,000 range, 10 in the 15,000 range, and then six in the 20,000 range, and two in the 30,000 range. And the property otherwise complies with the building setback requirements, building height, and the number of stories. And these are the development standards. I think you're aware of these as far as the local comprehensive plan goes, the project meeting, greater infill development, encouraging and allowing for multiple housing opportunities, and accepting the responsibility for providing housing for people of all stages of life and levels of income. The housing funding priorities for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, create affordable housing with increased density that is compatible with the neighborhood, meet the criteria of the population by providing for housing for low-income households, and providing housing for larger families needing the three bedrooms, creating first-time homebuyer housing, and providing workforce housing at 80% annual median income. As far as the development standards go, this project supports the implementation of local and regional housing plans. It supports the governor's mass housing choice goal of 135,000 new housing units. It is an innovative method of providing an affordable housing unit that will be restricted in perpetuity and added to the town's subsidized housing inventory. The Affordable Housing Committee does support the application. And that is the presentation. Essentially, we have an opportunity here to take an existing home that is a very lovely home in a lovely neighborhood and make it available to a deserving family that could buy the home at $265,000, and it would be restricted at closing with a deed restriction so that it would be maintained as an affordable housing unit in perpetuity. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan. Jury, any questions?
A couple I don't know if you could consider pro forma. In your opinion, is this setting precedent? There was a letter to the Selectman that said this could set precedent.
Precedent for further affordable housing units?
Well, approving a lot that was denied a building permit.
Well, I think, yes, it could, but I don't think there's anything wrong with that.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think that this is a very unique situation, obviously, and the whole process of the building permit and what happened with the building permit. But the bottom line here is that if this lot was not built upon and it was known that it was unbuildable, it would be eligible for a 40B comprehensive permit regardless. And in my opinion, it probably would be more suitable for two units because of the size of the lot and because of the critical need for affordable housing. So I guess to answer your question, if this happened again in the future, hopefully it wouldn't because of all the difficulties that have come about, that somebody, yes, could under 40B, I think, come to you and apply for a comprehensive permit, just like we're doing here.
Two others, and they may go to the court cases. This doesn't have a building permit. How will this property get a building permit?
Well, I believe it does have a building permit, but the occupancy permit, I think, had been revoked. But I think there was a building permit issue.
I won't debate it with you. We can check with others on that.
Essentially, what I think would happen is if the board approved this application and the comprehensive permit validated and legalized the lot and the structure, then we would then go to the building department and secure whatever permits the building commissioner felt needed to be issued. And I think we would be looking at a certificate of occupancy, for sure.
Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, jury. James, anything?
I may have some questions after public comment.
Sure. Scott?
I'm sorry, your slides aren't numbered. Could you go back to the slide where you depicted the square footage of the homes in the neighborhood? There was 17, okay, 17 at 10,000.
Yeah, I took this from the assessor's records. If you go into the assessor's records and you just search Pheasant Lane, then all the properties on Pheasant Lane come up, and they actually have the lot square footage. But I thought this was telling because the plan for this neighborhood was from the '60s or '70s. So many of these lots were built on in that time period on 10,000-square-foot lots, which was how the lots were laid out on the recorded plan, or 15,000. So the majority, I think, 27, are 15,000 or under.
Thank you very much. No further questions.
Scott? Suzanne?
Attorney Moynihan, do you know if the property is currently occupied?
It is occupied, I believe.
And if the board were to approve this application, what would happen to the people currently living there?
Well, that would be up to the property owner to make arrangements to have it not occupied by the intended closing date. I think we have a closing date under the purchase and sale agreement, subject to various conditions, for the end of the year. So there's plenty of time there.
Are they under a lease, or are they tenants at will?
I don't really know. I don't have that information.
Any other questions from the board for now? We'll turn it over to public comment. Anyone have any public, I'm sorry, any questions, comments, or concerns? Sir?
I've lived at 107 Pheasant Lane for the past 29 years. I'm also a retired science educator of 36 years in the Falmouth Public Schools and a current volunteer for Pond Watchers. I would like to strongly urge the zoning board to continue to uphold the zoning regulations regarding the house on 33 Pheasant Lane, as they have throughout the ongoing litigation. I applaud their dedication to ensuring that the zoning laws in Falmouth are adhered to. It's hard to believe that anyone would think that it is legal to build on an 11,540-square-foot lot when the requirement is 40,000 square feet. We're talking about a lot with a history. Building permits were denied three times over the years prior to the construction of the house on 33 Pheasant Lane. When the lot was being cleared late in January, early February of 2019, my neighbor and ZBA member Ed Van Kuren alerted the building commissioner that the lot was unbuildable. The warning flag was raised very early on before construction began. I think many of us would like a little bit more clarity on how construction was allowed to proceed. There are a number of negative impacts by allowing the house to stay in an environmentally sensitive area. There's a loss of open space impacting wildlife and neighborhood drainage and recharge. You have additional nitrogen loading from a septic system and lawn just three houses away from Green Pond. You have an increase in neighborhood density, and this is setting a horrible precedent that takes us back 50 years in zoning regulation, when we didn't fully understand the harmful impacts that small lot sizes have on fragile estuaries. I'd like to think we have learned some lessons from our past zoning mistakes. Remediation is expensive for both the town and the homeowners, as we found out when installing source systems in the Maravista and Little Pond areas. Let's not compound this problem. And I urge the ZBA to do the right thing and continue to uphold the lot size zoning regulation. And lastly, I'd like to see the builder and the Falmouth Housing Trust collaborate to move the house to a legal-sized lot and for the builder to restore the Pheasant Lane lot to its natural condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have public comment? Now, there's a lot of people here, or a lot more than we're used to these days. Anyone else for public comment? All right. Back to the board. Attorney Moynihan, if you'd like to address any comments?
Just to answer Attorney Morris's comment, Ms. Bissonette tells me that her understanding there's a lease in place until September. So it's not a tenant at will.
You can't hear what he's saying.
There's a lease in place until September. It's not a tenant at will, which was, I think, your question. Just to respond to Mr. Sister Renelli, I apologize if I am not pronouncing that properly. I think this board knows, but it's worth repeating for the record, that so long as the town of Falmouth has not met the state mandated 10% minimum for affordable housing, the critical need for affordable housing is deemed to outweigh other local concerns, some of which he mentioned. And that's why we are working very hard to try and reach that 10% minimum, and we're doing pretty well, but we still have another 417 units to go. So that's important here. Also, you know, as noted, many of these lots on Pheasant Lane are of the 10,000 to 15,000 square foot area, including the one at 107 Pheasant Lane, which is 15,000 square feet according to the assessor's records. So we've tried to show you the photographs that indicate how well this house does fit into the neighborhood. I think it's, I would submit that it's perfectly sighted in the middle of the lot. There's plenty of yard area. There's plenty of buffer area between the other neighbors and the street, and it would be a lovely, lovely place for children to be able to live with a family, which is what the housing trust is trying to do here. With a three-bedroom home, it means a family with children typically as far as the household size. So with that, thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, Attorney Moynihan.
Is there one more comment?
I, yeah, go ahead. I mean, we typically close public comment.
I'm Joanne O'Sullivan. I'm on the board of the Falmouth Housing Trust, and Laura alluded to this, but a question I had when we began our process was that if this developer had come to you for a comprehensive permit for a 40B development on this lot, as opposed to his normal building permit process, which is what he did, I suspect that this lot would have qualified for a 40B permit in the first place. I think that's important to understand, as opposed to, this could never have possibly been built on ever but for the mistake of the building department. I think if a 40B had been applied for in the first place, I think the ZBA might have had a tough decision to try to deny that permit. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Back to the board, then. Any other follow-up questions? None? Oh, okay, sorry. I didn't know you said one or none. This side, anything?
No questions, no? Motion to close the hearing or continue, possibly?
I think we should have a discussion.
Okay. Before we close.
Want to start us off, James?
Sure. So for the record, I'm not upset at Falmouth Housing for bringing this by any stretch. I've been an advocate of affordable housing. I represent affordable housing organizations. I just want to put on the record for the benefit of a lot of the butters who are here today that I don't disagree that if this had come in as a 40B application, I would be voting against it because it doesn't have enough affordable units. I think the building of a three-bedroom on this lot, if it was coming in originally as a 40B, would not be in keeping with the production plan, and I'd be opposed to it in its current condition. I don't disagree with Attorney Moynihan, and for the purpose of the butters, we're pigeonholed about what we can and can't do based on the application. I am, I think this entire thing has been disingenuous and reeks of just backdoor maneuvering, and it's been disingenuous by the developer through no fault of Falmouth Housing and through no fault of Attorney Moynihan. But very frustrating position for the board to be put in, and then with the, how the whole thing has played out for the various regulatory agencies. So you're probably going to get my vote. I'll be holding my nose when I do it. And I'm very much in sympathy with you butters, but for the butters, we're in a rock and a hard place, and if we end up denying this, it will most likely be overruled by the hack. We'll just incur legal costs for the town, and that's, I think, would be wrong for us to do. But you have my sympathy with this issue. I'm not very happy with how this whole thing went down. Those are my two cents about where we are.
Thank you, James. Anyone else care to weigh in?
It's been a comedy of errors.
I think it's very succinct, what Mr. Morris has said. It's tremendously difficult here that we had to get to this position as a board to pretty much try and potentially clean up some issues that certainly should have been rectified long before there was ever shovel in the ground here. Clearly, the town needs more affordable housing, but it is very difficult to say that we've been really kind of painted into a corner here to make a decision on this opportunity now is where we are. Mr. Lacudara brought up a good point. I would have been interested in what the cost would be to move the house. Unfortunately, again, more money after bad. The lot sizes are, for the most part... Unfortunately, again, more money after bad. The lot sizes are, for the most part, in and around the 10,000 square feet, but that doesn't mean too much. And I kind of, I really don't follow the argument about whether or not this was a 40B or not. It wasn't. So, I really dismiss that aspect of it, but we're in a difficult position. I agree.
Thank you, Scott. Suzanne, anything?
Second.
Jerry?
No, I think you all said it. You know, we're giving lemonades, we're making lemon, I mean lemons, we're making lemonade. Question is, is there a benefit to continuing this?
To that, I would say yes. My comments were actually going to address a continuation. James, I certainly share your frustration, which, you know, throughout the years, how we got here with this process. But due to that complexity involved, the litigation, the prior decisions on record, the building permit, I would urge the board to continue the hearing, even if we do.
Speak up, Mr. Chairman, please.
Thank you. Sorry. It's that time of the evening.
What's your opinion?
Due to, due to the complexities involved in this case, or this application, I should say, I would urge the board to continue the hearing, even if, even if we were to direct the administrator to draft a decision, if we were to continue to allow her to draft a decision, to review all of the complexities involved and the legal history, the special permits, and.
It would be a positive decision. I say drafted decision has to go one way or the other.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not there.
Okay, so she's not going to draft, I was just, I don't know what drafted decision means, other than list the background and findings and.
Right. So, that's, that's where I.
I don't disagree. The other is, I think we need to have a plan in place of what they're going to do with a tenant, because that could, that could, that could be drawn out, fortunately, if they decide to fight.
Do you like me to request a continuance? Or do you feel you could do that yourself?
Well.
Happy to do that.
Well, first, do you want to address any concerns that the board's raised at this point?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure it's going to help, but I can certainly say, you know, that neither myself nor the Falmouth Housing Trust has really been involved in any of this over the years. So, I think it, we look at it differently than you, than you may, and certainly, we appreciate the work and the effort that this board puts into their decisions and the history here. But I guess from my point of view and the Housing Trust point of view, we look at it really simply, that it's a nice home in a nice neighborhood, and it would make a family extremely happy to live there. And we have a serious need to keep families in Falmouth. That's really the way we look at it. So, I don't know if that helps, but the back history is not something we really got involved in or, or really care to, to be frank, you know. It's more about meeting the mission of affordable housing. So.
I appreciate your comments, Attorney Moynihan, but certainly you would understand my concern that.
Yes, I do.
Either way, this board votes, I think it would be prudent of us to take everything into consideration and come up with.
Yes, and typically, and typically with the 40Bs, I think in the past, you have kept the hearing open for even review of any kind of draft decision, which I think is, we would want that.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from the board?
Are we going to address James' comment, or do we need a plan on how the tenants will be, I shouldn't say removed, but that could, I thought you implied it could delay the closing and other things. Oh, that's not our headache?
It's not our headache, but at the same time, if a tenant decides to fight, drag their feet, it could be six months to a year before. That would be unfortunate for the affordable purchase, or it could sidewell or derail the whole thing for a while.
Okay, just.
It's just a concern. They want to come back with a plan. I think that's their prerogative, but it is a concern.
Do we have a date? Should we continue?
I'll second.
So, your next dates are either August 11 or August 25?
Chief Chairman, I would not be able to be here for the 11th. That makes the difference.
All right, so, looks like we're looking at a continuance through August 25?
Yes.
Yes.
Is anyone available?
Yep.
All right, so would anyone, would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to continue.
To date certain.
August 25, here at Town Hall.
I'll second.
All right, so the motion was made by Suzanne and seconded by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Would the board be inclined to make a motion to direct the drafting of a decision for that meeting? Or, I think that's usually what, or would the administrator just be doing that anyway?
The board, how do you feel?
We should hold up at this point. There's, the other concern is the litigation piece that's pending, and I think we need to circle back with our outside counsel. If we're going to clear this up, I want to make sure it's completely cleared up.
It's just with open meeting laws, then you would not be able to direct any type of decision for that August meeting outside of the hearing room.
Correct. I think. TJ, you agree with the open meeting laws?
No, right, we, no, we would not. In the meantime, we would not be able to have a draft decision, or direct, or make a draft decision. All decisions that we make are made through the public hearing.
You could direct drafting to, to decisions, an approval and a denial, if that makes you feel more comfortable, and then you could consider both at the meeting, and it's probably just a matter of a change of a couple of pages.
I'd be against that, just for, I think it's.
What's that?
I'd be against having a positive and a negative decision drafted, but I don't know what the other board members felt.
I don't ever recall directing a.
I agree, I think it's.
Directing two decisions to begin.
You're getting innovative, but.
Well, well, one option is to direct for findings and conditions to be drafted without a decision, and then the decision is made at the hearing.
You also have 180 days, so you're not, you're not required to have a draft immediately.
I'm inclined to wait.
I would feel more comfortable circling back with our special counsel.
Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I probably have to put on the record that I'm not sure that that's authorized while the public hearing is open.
Okay.
To have executive session, so.
Even so, Attorney Moynihan, it's, it's the first hearing of this 40B. We have up to 180 days to issue a decision, and I know.
Right, I guess what I'm saying is.
Among ourselves, we have, we have a lot of paperwork and a lot of history on this property to review before rendering a decision.
Are you saying?
Yes, I understand, and I.
Executive session is not allowed to consider litigation?
What I, what I was suggesting, that if there's going to be consultation with special counsel, it should be at the public hearing on August 25.
Not if it pertains to existing litigation counsel.
That's what I thought.
The litigation has stayed. So, we're in the midst of a public hearing, so you obviously can make that decision, but I'd like, I would put it on the record that if there's going to be consultation with special counsel, it can't be an executive session. It should be in an open meeting, public meeting, as part of this process on the 25th, for the record.
And it'll be noted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so this is continued to August 25, here at Falmouth Town Hall. Thank you for your time tonight, Attorney Moynihan.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Now, would I have been able to actually go in there and watch it, just as long as that don't affect, affect anybody in the room, right?
As long as you're outside of the room, you're fine.
Yeah.
All right, so first, we have voting, open meeting items. We have voting minutes from June 9 and June 23. Everyone has voting minutes from June 9.
That was out there.
The numbers who were here, anyone care to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to approve. The first one is the 9th, correct?
Yep. All right, so motion was made to approve June 9. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by James. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Three, all right, and three abstentions. Interesting. June 23.
Move to approve.
All right, move to approve made by James, second by Scott. All those in favor who were there?
Aye.
We're getting up there.
Five of us? All right, so that passes five with one abstention. All right, up next, we have reorganizing the board. This is something that was on the agenda earlier. It's something we usually do the first meeting in July. We tell off on that due to members of the board leaving and waiting for others to be appointed. So, now that we, now that we're at a complement of five full-voting members, we can go forward. Reorganizing the board. It's been our practice in the past that all members actually can vote. However, officers themselves can only be full-voting members.
Correct.
So, I think everyone knows the positions. We have the chair, the vice chair, and clerk. And would you like to start with the clerk first?
I'll make a motion for James.
Would anyone like, would anyone like to make a motion to nominate anyone as clerk?
I'll, I'll make a motion to nominate James.
All right.
I'll second that.
Motion to appoint James as clerk was made by Jerry.
No good deed goes unpunished. No, sir.
Mark, was that seconded by Mark?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
You're welcome.
Test, test run is work so far.
Yeah.
Done stellar work.
Nothing's more permanent than a temporary assignment.
Remind me not to go to the selectmen's meetings. Get put on something else.
Entertain a motion for vice chair. Is there a motion?
I nominate Scott Peterson.
I'll second. Okay.
Motion made by Mark to appoint Scott Peterson as the vice chair, and I'll give the second to James. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Scott.
Chairman, I'll nominate you to continue on as our chair.
I appreciate that.
I'll second that.
So, motion was made by James to appoint myself as chair, and seconded by, I'll give that to Suzanne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. All right. So, the board is reorganized. Board updates. Welcome, Mark. I know I said that at the beginning.
Thank you.
But welcome to the board. And Suzanne, you were reappointed.
Again.
I know you, you had a short term yourself, but you had to be reappointed.
Six days.
So, welcome, welcome back once again.
You're a veteran now.
Yeah. All right. Anything else for board updates?
Other than what we've read, is there anything else on the re-credification? Are we still in a big hole? We're doing both.
So, there's, there's a meeting that is scheduled for the working group that's coming up. As the board may be aware, the attorney general's office has not approved the re-credification. So, the working group is, we're discussing with the two gentlemen that assisted with the re-credification, what next steps up. So, those have not yet been determined, but at this point in time, we are using the law where this one is not.
All right. Another board update. I know I just hit on the two appointments, but since we're building up our numbers, there is one more seat available. So, if anyone out there wants to put in an application for the one last spot, it's an alternate spot or alternate seat, go ahead and apply to the select board. Board discussion, anything?
I just like folks to think about if and when we have more 40B developments, would we seek to have outside counsel support us, or can the inside counsel support us? Just something for, you folks have been closer to, much closer to it than I have, but it seems like they wind up in some sort of litigious stance by the time we go through all of this process. So, I'm not sure if that makes financial sense to the town, but I'd like to at least have folks thinking through.
So, you would be asking for counsel here with us during?
Correct.
Okay.
Private counsel, or it doesn't matter?
We would ask, we'd ask town counsel if they could support first. If they couldn't, then is there the ability to allocate for support?
It's, it's been a very long time since we opted for this option, but I do remember in the past for larger, more complicated 40B projects, and I forget which state agency it is, I don't know if ATAC or one of them, they do offer support. So, might be worth brushing up on exactly how to request that support if.
Sounds reasonable.
If a 40B comes along.
Something.
Yep. But I remember in the past for larger, more complicated projects, we have had counsel sitting right over there with Noreen and Ashley and providing guidance along the way, live during the hearings, so.
I think that's the case.
The council. The subsidized housing inventory is being updated. We have a new housing coordinator, as folks may be aware. It appears as though the subsidized housing inventory has not been updated for some period of time, and where we had a former housing coordinator that left and a new one that started, that of course increased the gap. But it appears, fingers crossed, that we may potentially qualify for a safe harbor. That being said, we may have a limited amount of time that we would be able to utilize that due to times of submissions. But nonetheless, as the board's aware, there were several 40Bs that you did approve and are underway, so that the town is starting to.
I would just suggest, Mr. Chairman, that as a future agenda item, we just get a report about that from time to time, just to stay on top of the town, just to keep making sure that that list is accurate and up to date, so that if necessary, we can invoke safe harbor if there's a project that we don't like.
Maybe once, when she gets her feet on the ground, we could have her come in.
That'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
And, Noreen, like you said, that's, that's a certification process. We had to submit it to the state, get it approved.
Right, you have to be.
Before it comes into effect, we can't, we can't just say that.
So, basically, there have been a bunch of forms essentially filled out, submitted to the state, requesting that the units that have approved be added. So, the problem is that until you're certified by the state, you can't claim the safe harbor. So, once the state processes what's submitted, you'll see.
Thank you.
Back, I'm assuming you and or Scott will be attending the re-credification meeting?
It's next Wednesday, 11 to 1.
Yeah, it's, it's usually an open meeting, but you, to the official, though.
All right. Anything else for board discussion? Future agenda items? All right. Our next meeting is August 11, here at Town Hall. Meeting adjourned.